Everybody ready? That's good, good. Everybody out there ready? All right. Hello, everybody. Merry Christmas music. I'm going to go ahead and call the Thursday, December 7th Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Langford, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please rise and join us in pledging allegiance to our great flag, repeating it after me. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Bartow, who is excused this evening. And Commissioner Lowry is teleconferencing from Embassy Suites Loveland, 4705 Clydesdale Parkway, Loveland, Colorado, 80538.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment. This is the time we'll go ahead and take public comment on items that are not on the agenda but are generally under the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Requests for continuances, staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, there are no requests for continuances.
Great. Okay, moving on to consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of November 9th, 2023. Would anybody from the audience wish to speak on the minutes from November 9th, 2023? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion and a second. And I believe because Commissioner Lowry is calling in, we're going to do all of our votes this evening verbally across the board. Okay, great. We have a motion and/or a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Great, call for a vote.
I will take a roll call vote now. Please respond when I call your name. Chair Elmore.
I abstain, as I was not here.
Commissioner Langford.
Aye.
Secretary Harris. Commissioner Celine.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosine.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lowry. The motion carries four zero with Chair Elmore abstaining.
Great, moving on. Okay. Public hearing items, item number two. This is the Pine Knott Motel CDP Appeal, PA 2023-0027. The location's at 6302 West Coast Highway. Commissioner Harris?
I abstain. I have a business relationship with a member of the applicant group unrelated to this item.
Great, we'll give you a minute. Okay, staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Chair Elmore, we're going to boot up the right presentation here. We had the applicant's presentation up, so bear with us. With Mr. Lowry coming in from afar, it's created a little issue for our tech today, so bear with us.
Not a problem, take your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Elmore, my name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning Division, and the first public hearing item for your consideration is an appeal of the Pine Knott Motel Coastal Development Permit. The subject property is located at 6302 West Coast Highway. The subject site historically was developed with the Pine Knott Motel. This was a 12-room motel that had caretakers' quarters, a central courtyard, a lobby, nine onsite parking spaces. The provided amenities were limited, so the motel was able to offer accommodations that fell below the statewide average and was considered a low-cost motel. The motel operated in this location for many decades prior to current use regulations and operated without a CUP and was considered a non-conforming use. In 2018, the motel suffered a pretty significant fire in the southwest corner of the property. Rooms one through four were red-tagged, with the remainder of the motel yellow-tagged. The red-tagged rooms were subsequently demolished under a emergency coastal development permit, with the remaining rooms yellow-tagged for significant smoke and water damage. So while there are rooms still physically standing there, they are unoccupiable, they're uninhabitable, they can't be rented out without significant repair. So after the fire, the property owners at the time worked with the city to explore their options for redeveloping the property, restoring the property, rehabilitating it, repairing it, and ultimately sold the property to the current ownership that is seeking to implement their rehabilitation plan. The plan includes repairing the damaged portions of the motel, which is shaded there in yellow. The motel will maintain a relatively similar footprint while reconfiguring the floor plan. The project also includes building a new building and the addition of a second story. That's the portion of the motel that's highlighted there or shaded there in blue. The motel will maintain the same number of rooms, that's 12 guest rooms, eight of which will be standard rooms, four suites, two of the rooms will be accessible to individuals with disabilities. The motel will also provide beach-friendly amenities such as chairs, towels, umbrellas. There will be bikes onsite that guests can use. The project will also provide a bocce ball court, fire pit, and a commercial trash enclosure. Also, part of the project is restriping that parking lot to provide inaccessible space that inaccessible for individuals with disabilities. While non-conforming uses in structures typically can be, when they're destroyed by a fire, they can be rebuilt by right, however, this project involves adding that partial second story at the front, so that's increasing the height of the building by more than 10%. And it involves reducing the number of parking spaces to accommodate that accessible space I just mentioned. Therefore, a coastal development permit is required. And I wanted to point out that this rendering is slightly different than the one you have in your staff report. This is, it features some different materials and landscaping. This is the latest and greatest rendering provided by the architect. As I mentioned, this is an appeal. The project went to the zoning administrator earlier this year in September. The zoning administrator ultimately approved the project, and the appellant, Jim Mosher, filed an appeal, which I will address in more depth after providing some additional background on the proposed project. While the project generally complies with development standards, the one area where it does not is the parking. A motel use requires one parking space per room. The previous layout of the parking lot provided nine spaces. Those standard stalls were deficient in width and depth. The proposed layout complies with current standards for depth and width, and also for that disabled access parking space that I've highlighted there in yellow. While Title 20, the zoning code allows these reductions to be done administratively when it's a reduction in parking to accommodate striping for an ADA space, Title 21, our local coastal program, doesn't have that same allowance, so you have to get a coastal development permit in order to approve that reduction. In order to approve that reduction, there are certain findings that need to be made. First and foremost, the project must demonstrate that there's a reduced parking demand and that there's a lack of impact to coastal access. In this case, the motel is in proximity of John Wayne Airport. It's reasonable to assume that not all parties are going to arrive by personal vehicle. Some people are going to use Uber, Lyft, Rideshare to get to the motel. Families that are going to rent more than one room, they're likely to arrive in just one car. And the same with large groups, too. People may rent more than one room but aren't necessarily bringing more than one car. With regards to impacts to coastal access, there's parking within proximity of the site along the northbound side of Coast Highway, as well as in the municipal lots that I've highlighted with those stars. As I mentioned, the motel is going to be providing bicycles to guests, so somebody who's arriving by plane, who may otherwise rent a car, they're incentivized to not show up in that car. They've got a bike if they want to get to the peninsula. And as I mentioned, the restripe provides that accessible space, and the reconfigured parking layout provides rooms that are accessible to those with disabilities. So the ability for disabled individuals to access the coast is increased through this project. Any application that involves visitor accommodations must consider the project's ability to either provide, encourage, or protect low-cost overnight visitor accommodations, which we call LCOVA. The applicant prepared a feasibility and impact analysis. The impact, the report considered a variety of factors such as land values, what average daily rate the motel needs to charge in order to be successful. It defined the parameters of what is successful, and ultimately, the report found that the motel has to charge an average daily rate of $325 a night in order to operate successfully. This is above the statewide average of $188, so providing LCOVA at this site is infeasible. A motel cannot charge that low of a rate and operate successfully. The code, because the project's not creating any low-cost, any LCOVA, it results in an impact in providing low-cost accommodations. The code has, pardon me. When there is an impact, the code requires that 25% of the new rooms created are mitigated for. So in this case, it's a 12-room motel, requiring three rooms be mitigated for. The applicant worked with the Community Development Director to arrive at a mitigation fee for the failure to create any low-cost visitor accommodations. They arrived, they determined a fee of $25,000 per room for a total of $75,000, and that's based on the size of the motel, the average daily rate they're charging, the amenities. And this fee that the applicant will pay is, will benefit the Fostering Interest in Nature Program, the FIN program. FIN brings kids out to the coast, teaches them about, as shown in the figure there, they're engaged in a touch pool where they're seeing anemones, they're taken out on kayak trips, they're camped at the coast. It's a program that brings kids out to the coast and fulfills that lower-cost overnight The appeal has four points. First and foremost, the appeal contests the $25,000 fee per room. It contests the number of rooms that are being mitigated for. It contests if the current proposal qualifies as diligent pursuit of a restoration plan within 12 months of damage, and it contests the loss of the two parking spaces. Staff has prepared a response to each point. The in lieu, in the appeal, the appellant references the mitigation fee that the Lido House Hotel paid in 2015, references that that fee is around $44,000 per room, and this project is only paying $25,000 per room. However, staff believes that that is not an appropriate comparison, because the Lido House Hotel has, it's, for one, it's a hotel, and it offers quite a different variety of amenities compared to this motel. There's over 100 rooms, there's an onsite restaurant, there's rooftop bar, views of the marina, it's on the peninsula. They're able to charge a much higher rate to stay there, where Pine Knott is a motel. It's more modest, it charges a lower rate, so this lower fee is more appropriate for a motel. Second, the appeal contests how many rooms are being mitigated for. As I mentioned earlier, the 2018 fire destroyed that motel. Four rooms were demolished, but the rest are uninhabitable. You can't go in them without significant repair. So there's no accommodations being offered at that site today. This is not closing down a motel to convert it into a higher-end motel. It's not the owner's willfully ending visitor accommodations at that site. The fire ended the accommodations. And so for the purpose of the impact analysis, this project is creating new accommodations, and therefore, we're applying the standard that you have to mitigate 25% of the new rooms. The third point of whether this project qualifies as diligent pursuit of a plan within 12 months of the damage, the code, Pine Knott was a non-conforming use, and the code allows discretion to the director. In this case, the previous owner worked with city staff. There's a lot of considerations that go into planning this rehabilitation of the motel, and the director satisfied that this is a diligent pursuit of a plan and therefore can be reestablished. And then with the reduction in parking, staff believes that the operational characteristics I covered earlier, the ability for visitors to use Rideshare, the proximity of parking, there are adequate facts to support the request. And with that, I'd like to move on to the next steps. However, before I do that, I'd like to make one correction to the resolution. Condition of approval, number 18. This area of the city, no construction is allowed on Saturday, and there, however, the resolution mentions the allowed construction hours for Saturday, so I'd like to strike that. And with that, I recommend that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and adopt the resolution denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the zoning administrator. That concludes my presentation. We have representatives from the applicant who have a brief presentation they'd like to show you, and I'm available for any questions.
Great. Thank you. That's a great report. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Lowry, any questions?
Nope. I'm good, thank you.
Commissioners, any ex parte communications? I'll start down with Commissioner Rosine.
I spoke with the representative of the applicant. I also spoke with the representative of the applicant.
None for me. Commissioner Lowry?
None.
I spoke with the applicant.
Great, okay. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation. Is that accurate? Appellant, do you have a presentation? Not to come up right now, but I'm just curious if you have one.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Lowry, members of the commission. My name, as you know, is Jim Mosher.
It's Chair, Mr. Mosher, it's Chair Elmore. I'm going to have the applicant speak first, Mr. Mosher. I was just curious if you have a presentation.
Oh, yes, I have six slides I wanted to show.
Great, thank you. Applicant, how many slides do you have?
I believe it's an eight-page PowerPoint.
Eight-page, okay. How long in general, what do you think timeline you'll need?
Probably four or five minutes altogether between the two of us.
Five minutes? Is that fair? Okay. Appellant is five minutes? Is that sufficient time if they have 10 and you have six? 10 minutes. Okay, well, why don't I, I'll move to the middle on both, and I'll go ahead and I'll make it seven minutes for you and seven minutes for you. Is that fair for both?
I can lower mine down if you need to.
No, that's fine. I just want to keep ordering all this. So we'll do seven minutes, we'll do seven minutes for both at the max, and if you want to be in shorter, that's great. And if not, then the bell will go off. Okay. Applicant, please proceed with your presentation.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking Planning Commission for their time and hearing the application, everything that you guys do for the city to keeping it special. It's a wonderful city, and I'm lucky to be able to call it home. I'd also like to thank Zoning Administrator Ben Zadiba, Planning Manager Jaime Murillo, Associate Planner Roslyn Perez, and Deputy Community Developer Director Jim Campbell. Thank you for your service to the city, and congratulations on retirement. I will keep this brief. My name is Kevin Giz. I'm the owner of Pine Knott at 6302 West Coast Highway. I've had an overwhelming amount of support from speakers that have wanted to come here and talk on behalf of the project, but I know that the schedule is busy, and I asked for letters to be emailed. I believe that you guys have received those. I'm passionate about this project and trying my best to make it work for the west side of Newport. A side of town that's in need of improvement and truly deserves more. That is my goal. I wanted to introduce Eric Oss, the architect on the project. He's going to run through a PowerPoint explaining more. Thank you, guys.
Hello, I'm Eric Oss. I'm the architect of this project.
Can I bring up the presentation?
Yes. I'll start by thanking Jocelyn Perez and the Planning Department for their efforts on this project. It's truly been a positive and collaborative process thus far. After the fire in 2018, the previous owners were unable to revitalize the damaged property. Kevin, who you just met, spearheaded a group to come in and save the property. The project will replace the burned-down units in addition to remodeling the majority of the existing structure with 12 hotel rooms, a lobby, a coffee bar, and a second-floor deck. The new structure along PCH will help block noise from Coast Highway into the Newport Shores neighborhood while maintaining the lower-scale, one-story structure at the rear of the property. As I said before, I'm the architect on this project, and we're also collaborating with Riley Claussen to provide the interior design for this project. Here are just a few images of the existing conditions of the property. It's been an eyesore for the city of Newport Beach for years and is in desperate need of repair. Prospect Street, which you can see on the right, is one of the two entrances into the Newport Shores neighborhood, and the residents of that area have been clamoring to repair this structure that they have to drive by each and every day. Some of our, our goal from the outset of this project was to maintain a majority of the existing structure and to minimize the impact on the adjacent residential community. This unique, small hotel will provide a business and structure that the community can be proud of and will help revitalize a neglected part of the city. Here's just a few images of the design direction we're going with this project. In conclusion, this hotel will bring visitors to the city and help neighboring businesses grow around it while providing a much-needed repair of a derelict structure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. While I have you and before we start the appellants, Kevin, do you agree with the recommended conditions of approval?
What's that?
Do you agree with the recommended conditions?
Yes.
For the project? You're in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none here, Lee, Commissioner Lowry, any questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you, guys.
The appellant, would you please step forward with your presentation?
Thank you again, Chair Elmore, members of the commission. My name is Jim Mosher, and I did have six slides I'm hoping to show. And if you see them, you'll see I'm not a professional slide maker. I'm appealing this to you because when it was before the zoning administrator, I thought there were a number of issues that reasonable minds could differ on, and it's not, that those decisions are appealable, and you are the reasonable minds that might have a different idea on this than the single staff person, the zoning administrator, did. Among those concerns is first, apparently just to avoid the need to have a conditional use permit, as all hotels are supposed to have, this application was being pursued, as we heard, as a diligent plan to restore a previously allowed use that had been involuntarily interrupted. But at the hearing, it did not sound like it was a diligently pursued plan. Second, as part of the city's commitment to preserve and protect low-cost visitor accommodations, the processing of such an application requires a citywide review of the state of low-cost accommodations in the city, and the one provided by this company called PKF, which for unknown reasons the staff calls PFK, seemed to be totally inadequate for that purpose. Third, the in lieu fee that was being charged, the $25,000, did not sound like it in any way could compensate for the loss of the low-cost accommodations. And third, the parking was far below the standards, which usually would be subject to conditions of approval. If I could have slide two, please. As to this question of whether this is the restoration of a previous use or a new plan, I don't need to read it to you here, but this is the timeline of what went on, and I would point out that there was a lapse with the previous owner, very nearly a month shy of two years, with no progress on this. We have heard that the previous owner had a plan. I don't know what that plan was. Didn't seem like for two years it was being very diligently pursued. COVID came along, that's an excusable lapse of time, but after a year, a new owner showed up, and it's another year and a half before anything was applied to, to the city. It doesn't seem to me either diligent, and what was applied to in January 2023, which you see now, is a plan for a high-cost hotel replacing a low-cost one. It seems neither replacement nor diligence. If I can have slide number three. I'm trying to explain here the city's commitment, which it makes in its local coastal program, and it is the CDP that I am appealing, not the coastal, the conditional use permit. I don't think it's explained clearly in the staff material or in the PKF report exactly what low-cost visitor accommodations are. We have, in our implementation plan, defines three different categories. Anything over 120% is high, anything below the average is low, and then there's a medium. The commitments of the city are threefold. One is we're supposed to preserve any accommodations that we have in the low-cost category. Third, as you heard, if you have new development, there's a commitment that 25% of that will be low-cost. And third, if they can't provide that, they're allowed to pay an in lieu fee. But unlike what the city staff said, the in lieu fee is not related to what amenities they're providing or how big the hotel is. That is to substitute for the low-cost room that they're not providing. And anybody providing a, not providing a low-cost room, the price, cost to substitute that somewhere else in the city is the same. So can I have slide number four, please? We were supposed to be told what the status of low-cost visitor accommodations in Newport Beach are, and the staff is relying on this PKF assessment. The assessment claims that there are no low-cost rooms at all in the coastal section of Newport Beach. I think that they are not quite understanding what is meant by this, because they treat each hotel as having a single price to it. But a hotel can have a mix of low-cost, small rooms, large luxury suites, other things. I don't know that they investigated whether there were any low-cost rooms available in Newport Beach. If you go online and ask for accommodations here, you see some quite reasonable rates. Motels that show up, one of them is the Channel Inn, which is just down Coast Highway from this. That's not part of their survey of the city. Another one is called the Little Inn by the Bay. Always has low rates, they're not part of their survey. I don't, I don't even know if the Pine Knott was low, because we're not told what they were charging before the fire. And it does not assess whether it's possible to have some low-cost rooms in the Pine Knott. I would point out, the rooms that are being preserved are only a little over 200 square feet, they're about 216 square feet, very small for a hotel. I don't know how they're going to get $320 overnight rent for those. Perhaps they could be made even smaller and rented at a lower cost. That's an option for providing low-cost accommodations in Newport Beach. The $25,000, as I pointed out in writing, is not going to buy very much, even if it's contributed to the FIN program. Eight years ago, the contribution from the Lido House, as we heard, was $42,000. Just two months ago, in October, the Coastal Commission, to provide camping sites in the city of Encinitas, thought the cost was about $145,000 per site to be produced. They were not doing that. As to, and then can I have slide number five? As to the parking question, this obviously is much lower than the standard we expect, and I think have and I think have most of our hotels. The staff provides lots of reasons. We're thinking that seven spaces might be adequate for 12 guest rooms, but it seems to me to be speculation. I would, it might work. I don't know if it doesn't. I don't see any assessment of comparable facilities in the city. Or is that low amount of parking working for them? I don't see any clear operation plan. We don't know how much staff is going to be at the hotel, if any. We don't know how, and there's no conditions of approval that you normally would see. So anyway, the final slide shows the issues that I see. I believe the city is, the neighbors are seeing this as a long abandoned motel site. I don't think they see this as diligent restoration. Shouldn't there be an operational plan like you would have for any other hotel and have conditions of approval to assure they will be followed? Could this hotel provide low-cost accommodations on-site, which I think is probably feasible? And if not, is the compensation being provided adequate for the three rooms that the staff says is needed? And finally, 12 rooms, whatever you say, whether it was a fire or what, did go away. So what happened to the city's commitment to preserving its low-cost accommodations? 12 rooms went somewhere. Neither the applicant, nor the previous owner, nor the city, nobody is doing anything to replace those 12. We seem not to be fulfilling our commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the appellant? Seeing none on the dais, Commissioner Lowry from afar.
None. Thank you.
None. Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the audience to see if anybody from the audience would like to speak on this item. Please remind you that your comments need to be three minutes or less. Anybody from the audience? Great. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Renee Rumlinger. I currently live in the Newport Shores, put this up, that's all right, Newport Shores neighborhood. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the project. I've lived in Newport Shores for almost 30 years now, and I've seen that hotel go from, I don't even know if it's ever used as a hotel, more as a flop house for people to sleep there, weekly rentals, monthly, things like that. It was never an operating hotel, first of all. Second of all, I've watched it decline over the years and after the fire completely being abandoned. I'm the president of the Newport Shores Community Association. We have 11 members on our HOA board. All unanimously would like to see this project go forward. We're all from different backgrounds, different careers, different ages. We're all in agreement, the Newport Shores community is all in agreement on getting this redone. It's a blight for our neighborhood. It devalues our values of our homes. There's been some great redevelopment along that corridor. Finally, it's been neglected for many, many years. We've been seeing some nice things happening there. We'd like to continue to see that happen. As for parking, I can verify that once you're on-site or in that neighborhood where I live, you don't need a car. So once you're there, everything you need is within walking distance or a short bike ride. So you can walk to restaurants, you can ride your bike to bars, you can walk across the street for the beach as well. And then the other item is basically, you know, kids are on that sidewalk there waiting to go to school on days, and they're right there by that hotel, which is obviously, at the condition it is now, is very dangerous, I think. So keep that in consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it real quickly back to the applicant. Any final words after hearing the appellant's presentation? Or are you going to move on? Yep, okay. Appellant, any final words after hearing the speaker?
I would add, as to the parking, one of the points that the staff made was there was public parking available across Coast Highway from this. I would point out that parking is intended for beach visitors, and using that for the hotel use is not what the hotel having adequate parking is supposed to accomplish. It's actually contrary to what we're trying, it's impacting coastal access, which is what coastal development permits are about. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, I'll bring it back to you. Any comments for the record after hearing both presentations?
One of the things I want to point out on the parking is that our municipal code right now allows for the reduction of parking when you add disabled access spaces. The director can do this in any zone except for the coastal zone. And so we're furthering that policy that the city has here, and we know by opening up the hotel, we're serving visitors again. And we do believe the PKF study was appropriate in its analysis. We did arrive at a fee, $25,000 a unit for the three units, and we did that consistent with the municipal code. You know, we didn't want to overcharge for this because it really creates a feasibility of construction for the project. We can't charge the fees that Mr. Mosher is indicating that the Coastal Commission is charging for much larger and dissimilar projects. So we wanted to obviously scale it to a point where it's feasible for the project to go forward and pay that fee. Otherwise, we'd be taking too much for the project that might be infeasible, and we don't want a taking claim. So again, the impact of parking, we don't believe is a significant one, given the amount of parking in the area and the nature of the use. They're providing bicycles for all these variety of reasons, you know, for the good of the neighborhood. We recommend approval and I feel it's appropriate tonight. So if there's any other questions, we're happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the commission for action discussion or a motion. Commissioners, any comments? Yeah, Commissioner Langford, go ahead.
I got a, I got a question. Mr. Campbell, is this, or Ms. Perez, would this project eventually go to a sign program that goes back to the city? I saw in the most recent renderings, there was kind of a graffiti-looking thing on the highest part of the project. I just wanted to see if that was eventually going to get back to permitting on your side.
So any new signs are going to have to come forward, be consistent with the sign code. And so we just leave it to the sign code to regulate that. We don't have a sign package with this approval here. It's really about the land use and its consistency with the local coastal program. So you can expect signs to come in consistent with the municipal code.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Commissioner Lowry from afar, do you have any?
Just a quick question, and I may have missed it in the notes, but was there an ADR number from when the Pine Knott was operating before the fire? Was there, I mean, I know it's from a long period, so it may not be apples to apples, but just kind of get an idea of maybe what those average daily rates were, say, that pre-fire.
Well, I don't have that in front of me. The applicant may not, no.
Okay, I just, thought on a lark, just for that one argument. Okay. That was my only question.
Great. Commissioners, any other questions, comments, or motions? Commissioner, Vice Chair Rosine. Look like Yosef Nissay.
Yeah, I do. Actually, I think this is a, this is a difficult site for staff, and it's probably a difficult site for the applicant to try and make it work.
Your mic.
Sorry about that. And so I commend the applicant for actually bringing something forward and staff for coming up with a solution to make it work. Now, staff always has the right to say, if there's an operational issue, to come back and be made aware of it and make the applicant aware of it. I look at everything about this project as being difficult to bring forward unless you make some accommodations. And I can comfortably say that I believe that staff is doing just that, and I'd really like to see the applicant be, have the opportunity to develop this property. And so for that reason, I'm going to personally support this property.
Great. Do you want to make a motion?
So I can make a motion to approve staff's recommendation of PA 2023-0027 for the Pine Knott CDP.
Do you want to, do you have an opinion on condition number 18 that staff wished to strike from the record?
Yeah, I did notice that as well. Thank you for adding that. That's just in line with code, so yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Saleen?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table. We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, please respond when I call your name. Commissioner Langford? Chair Elmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Saleen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rosine?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant, and we will move on to next hearing item number three. The next hearing item number three is Sage Hill Middle School, PA 2022-0277. Site location is 20402 Newport Coast Drive. Staff? Oh, yeah, Mr. Harris, come on back. Deep into the football game. Welcome back. Okay, staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, commissioners and Chair Elmore. My name is Jenny Tran, and I'm the planner for this project for Sage Hill Middle School, located at 20402 Newport Coast Drive. As you can see in this map, the Sage Hills High School is located on the intersection of the 73 Highway and Newport Coast Drive, on the outskirts of Newport Coast and across from the city of Irvine. Close by is the Coyote Canyon landfill, which is closed, and to the south is the Coyote Canyon Renewable Energy Facility. This project is for major site development review, minor use permit, and traffic study. The project is requesting to increase student enrollment from 600 to 750 students and to construct a new three-story, 38,650-square-foot middle school and gymnasium building. The project also includes nighttime lighting and landscaping for the existing baseball field, as well as landscaping for the new school and gym. And as you can see on the south of the map here, the project also includes a component to improve Newport Coast Drive by extending the left turn lane on Newport Coast Drive and the Coyote Canyon landfill Renewable Energy Facility intersection. And I'll discuss more about the improvements to Newport Coast Drive later in the presentation. Starting off with a little background, in 1998, this property was under the jurisdiction of the County of Orange, where they approved a use permit for Sage Hill High School for grades nine through 12. And this also included a zone change to increase the height to a maximum of 65 feet. In 2000, this property was annexed to the city of Newport Beach, and between the years 2007 and 2021, the city has approved staff approvals in substantial conformance with the county-approved use permit. And in one of the staff approvals, it included the grade expansion for kindergarten to grade 12. Currently, the school is still only a high school with grades nine through 12. The high school will continue to operate under the county-approved use permit, whereas for this zoning district, schools require a minor use permit, and the middle school will be operating under this proposed minor use permit, should it be approved. And both use permits will be operating concurrently and rather than this use permit superseding the county-approved use permit. In the county-approved use permit, the maximum floor area was allowed to be 141,900, and the high school is vested those, that square footage, and they can continue their build-out to that maximum should they choose to in the future. The middle school is subject to the 0.5 maximum floor area ratio of this zoning district with the existing high school and the proposed middle school and gym. That will bring the floor area ratio to about 0.13. Also within this zoning district, the parking requirements is subject to the use permit, and this use permit will use the parking rate as determined with the county-approved use permit of one parking space per six high school students, two parking spaces per middle school classrooms, and one per faculty and staff. This is contingent on knowing how many of the 750 students are enrolled in high school versus middle school, but in the most extreme case, where all 750 students are enrolled in high school, the parking rate would require 254 parking spaces, and the school provides ample parking on the surface parking lot with 466 spaces. This project also includes a traffic study, and a traffic impact analysis was provided that studied nine intersections in impacts to the level of service or LOS. This traffic study determined that the project will not impact or create unsatisfactory LOS. There's also a queuing analysis prepared for this project that analyzed the left turn lane U-turn south of the property over at the Newport Coast Drive and Renewable Energy Facility intersection. This bar in green shows the current conditions of the left turn pocket. It's about 150 feet at this time, and it analyzed what the conditions for maximum enrollment. So with the existing high school, what the required left turn lane pocket would be, and as you can see currently, that left turn pocket is not sufficient to meet the demands of the current enrollment. It also analyzed the left turn lane pocket with the maximum enrollment with future conditions with the added 150 students. As you can see, the left turn lane will definitely not meet the demands of the future enrollment. Part of the project would require improvements to this left turn lane to increase this left turn lane pocket to 550 feet, which is a property shown with the green bar here. Also noted is this triangle shows there's a city monument sign on this median, and the applicant will be required to relocate the city monument with the improvements to this median. Additionally, as part of the project includes landscaping and lighting, the yellow dots show the proposed pole lights for the baseball field, and the natural turf of the baseball field will be replaced with artificial turf, as well as additional landscaping is proposed for the middle school and gym. I wanted to speak a little bit towards the CEQA requirements. This project is exempt per the Class 1 Existing Facilities Exemption and Class 14 Exemption for Minor Additions to Schools. There was a Biological Resources Technical Memorandum provided, which analyzed the fuel modification plan for vegetation removal and planting plan, as well as the nighttime lighting for the baseball field previously mentioned. The memorandum indicated that no invasive plants have any potential to change the coastal sage scrub conditions, and the light spillage from the nighttime lighting within the natural communities conservation plan zone has no significant impacts. Further, the improvements to Newport Coast Drive has, does not have an expansion of the existing roadway, and no additional automobile lanes are created, which allows it to be exempt per the Class 1 Existing Facilities Exemption. And the addition to the school does not have more than 25% increase in enrollment and no more than 10 classrooms, as only eight classrooms are proposed, which allows us to be exempt under Class 14 for minor additions to schools. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing and to find this project exempt from CEQA as previously indicated, and to adopt the resolution to approve this major site development review, minor use permit, and traffic study. I'm available for any questions and discussions. The applicant also has her own presentation to show. Thank you, commissioners, for your time.
Thank you, Jenny, for that. Fantastic. Commissioners, any questions of staff? I'll start down with Commissioner Rosine. None? Nope, nope. Commissioner Lowry, any questions of staff from afar?
None, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Langford, none? Okay, I'll go to Expartee Communications, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
I spoke with the applicant's representative.
None for me.
None for me.
None for me.
None.
Commissioner Lowry?
None for me.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, members of the commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, and I represent Sage Hill School in this application. Before I get started, I'd like to thank city staff for working with us on this project. Thank you. I especially want to thank Jim Campbell on the eve of his retirement for getting us here tonight and for the past 10, 15 years. It's been a lot of fun. We'll miss you. Okay. Sage Hill School was approved by the County of Orange in 1998 for 600 students and approximately 142,000 square feet. The school opened in the year 2000, and construction has been phased over time. The school site currently includes six buildings with classrooms, administrative offices, a library, a state-of-the-art science center, gymnasium, dance, and theater studio. There are also athletic facilities, including sports fields, tennis courts, and an aquatic center. The proposed project includes construction of a new middle school and gymnasium building, which would increase the student capacity by 150 students. We also propose installation of artificial turf on a practice field and a baseball field, night lighting on the baseball field, fuel modification to reduce night lighting on the baseball field, fuel modification to reduce transitional and ornamental vegetation nearest the building and the off-site improvements which is lengthening the left turn pocket from 150 feet to 550 feet. We are seeking a site development review permit, a minor use permit for the middle school and approval of the traffic study under the traffic phasing ordinance. Here is the school site. And you can see, sorry, my clicker is getting a little delayed. You can see in the yellow area, this is where the new middle school and gymnasium building will be located. And here we have an overlay dropping in the proposed development onto the site. Little closer view. And here we've kind of peeled off the roof and you can see the gymnasium on the first floor and the middle school classrooms above on the second floor. The third floor is not depicted in this image, but you can see how the classrooms will step down with the existing slope and you can see the outdoor learning courtyard which will be located to the right of the classrooms. Here are the south and west elevations. The building architecture will replicate the high-quality design of the existing school site. And I have a materials board for you here if you're interested in seeing this. The construction will utilize the same materials that are on the site today. Here's a photo simulation showing the existing setting in the top image and the middle school and gymnasium building at the bottom. This view was taken from the south bend on ramp of the toll road and this is the vantage point where the school, the new school building will be most prominent in the city. Here's a view from Newport Coast Drive. From this location, you won't see the new school building. As staff mentioned, the city conducted a traffic study consistent with the traffic phasing ordinance. Nine study area intersections were analyzed and there were no impacts to level of service. We did a queuing analysis which recommended lengthening the left turn lane from 150 feet to 550 feet and the onsite queuing capacity will remain adequate. I should also mention that the school hours will be offset by 30 minutes so the middle school will start 30 minutes later, the high school will start in an effort to not further concentrate the existing traffic. We also prepared a biological resources study to assess the new building, the fuel modification and the night lighting and there will be no impacts to biological resources. Chair Elmore, we have reviewed the conditions of approval and we are in agreement with all of them. We thank the Planning Commission for their time this evening. We're available for any questions.
Okay, well you just covered my next question, so well done. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lowry?
None for me, thank you.
See, none here, okay. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing to the audience. Does anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item? Please keep your, state your name for the record and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Billy Ray. I'm a senior at Sage Hill. I've had an amazing experience the past four years. I love the school and I hope the community approves it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Mike Boland. I'm a 30-year Newport Beach resident and the father of three daughters who graduated from Sage Hill. For the last 13 years, I've been a trustee and chairman of the Board of Trustees for the last four. We've been studying this project diligently for the last four years. It will largely complete the vision of the founders when we get it done, maximize the use of the site and I think maximize Sage's ability to deliver what we deliver to the community. We are amazingly supportive throughout the community of the project and I hope you will give us your consideration and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next speaker.
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Roser. A very small technical point looking at handwritten page 34, which is your decision on this application. Part two of the decision is where you say you're approving something. It's always been the custom in the past to specifically identify what it is you're approving. So normally it would say Sage Hill Middle School Project and in parentheses after that say what PA number it is that's being approved. I don't know if this is a new pattern or leaving that out was just inadvertent, but I noticed it was a little different than normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Great attention to detail. Any other speakers? Applicant, any final words? No, okay. Staff, any comments or for the record before I close public hearing?
Certainly. I think Mr. Roser is correct. I think if we just insert the PA number in item number two, the action of the resolution and that suffices and in essence references that application, that's an oversight on our part to put that in. So we would ask that that be added and we obviously recommend taking staff's recommendation with that minor change.
Great, okay. This time I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or inaction. Commissioners? Commissioner Lowry from afar, any comments?
I just say it looks like a very nice addition to the campus and seems like it will fit in well.
Great. Commissioners, Commissioner Harris, Secretary.
I really like it. I'm excited. I think they solved the only major issue is the queuing and the traffic, so I think it'd be a beautiful addition. I'll support and actually make.
I just wanted to say something real quick. I just wanted to thank the public for coming out tonight. It looks like there's other students here from Sage Hill, so thank you for being here tonight and to add to this process. And if you graduate and go somewhere else for a while, I hope you return to Newport Beach and continue to make your home here.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have a motion? From the chair's perspective, I think this is a fantastic project. You guys brought together a great application and we are going to be supportive and wish you the best of luck. With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve PA 2022-0277 with the modification to condition number 34. That's my motion.
Just as well as that minor insertion into the recommendation.
And with the minor insertion to the recommendation. Yep.
Please respond when I call your name, starting with Commissioner Langford.
Aye.
Chair Elmore.
Aye.
Secretary Harris. Commissioner Saleen. Vice Chair Rosin. Commissioner Lowry.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Congratulations to the applicant. And everybody, thank you for showing up and participating. Moving on, I'm going to give the room just 30 seconds to clear real quick. And I believe the next applicant, I don't know if you have anything you need to set up, but you can do that now if you want to. Are you applicant good to go? Great, okay. Item number three, the residence at 1400 Bristol Street, PA 2022-0296. The site locations 1400 and 1420 Bristol Street. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
One moment.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, Planning Commissioners. I'm Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division. The application tonight is the residences at 1400 Bristol Street. The proposed project is located at 1400 Bristol Street or Bristol Street North. It's located within the Newport Place area of Newport Beach within the larger airport area and it's adjacent to the 73 and near Jamboree. The proposed project includes the demolition of two existing office buildings that total almost 39,000 square feet as well as the construction of 229 four-rent apartment units. Of those apartment units, 203 would be market rate and 23 of them would be affordable to households with very low income. This is a podium-style project meaning that the first level is the parking structure with five levels of residential above. As I mentioned, there was the one level of on-grade parking with two levels of subterranean parking provided for a total of 422 parking spaces. The project also includes a pedestrian bridge that would go over the Spruce Street right-of-way. The applicant is requesting several entitlements. First and foremost, a general plan amendment which will allow them to change the underlying general plan designation from a general commercial office use to a mixed-use horizontal use. The general plan amendment also includes a request to add an additional 64 dwelling units to the base unit count and I'll go over the details of that in a moment. Additionally, similar to a zone change, the applicant is requesting a planned community development plan amendment and that would allow for this site to be included within the existing residential overlay contained within the Newport Place Planned Community. The nearest site to this that is included within the residential overlay is across the street. The project also includes a major site development review for the property and because affordable housing is included, the applicant is requesting an affordable housing implementation plan. The project requires a traffic study due to an increase in average daily trips of over 300 trips as well as a development agreement that will be required. Lastly, the applicant is proposing an addendum to the 2006 General Plan EIR to satisfy the CEQA requirement. I'd like to go through the dwelling unit count to provide a little bit more detail on that topic. In the airport area, there are 2,200 dwelling units that are allocated to be built. Many of those have already been constructed, however many remain. In order to determine how many dwelling units can be built, we take the existing office development and convert that into the equivalent of dwelling units. So what we're looking to do is to make sure that there's no net increase in trips and that's where we come up with the first number, the 89 base dwelling units. In addition to that, as I mentioned, the applicant is seeking a general plan amendment to allow for an additional 64 dwelling units to increase their base density to 153. With the application of density bonus which allows them to have a 50% increase in the dwelling units or 77 dwelling units, they come to a total amount of 230 where they're providing 229. They're able to achieve the density bonus due to the provision of affordable housing in the project, so they're including 15% of that base units, that 153, as affordable to very low incomes. Briefly, I'd also like to mention that this project does include a general plan amendment, so it's important that we analyze the project for compliance with Charter Section 423, also known as Green Light. And in this case, this particular project does not trigger any of the thresholds that are identified, any of the four thresholds that would require a vote of the electorate. And the most important one in this case, not only the trips, but we also look at the maximum number of units within the area and that maximum is 100. In this case, they're proposing 64. I'd write a brief overview of the site plan to orient you. On the right-hand side, we have Spruce Street and then Bristol Street is along the front. The primary access for the residential dwelling units will be along Bristol Street through a right-in and a right-out that will enter into the parking garage. The residents and guests can also access the street via Spruce Street or the building via Spruce Street as well from the arrow that you see there. There is an area within the public right-of-way that will be used for rideshare access only and this is considered to be a public amenity. In terms of loading zone for movers as well as deliveries, there is a separate area that's not located within the public right-of-way where they'll be able to achieve that on the left-hand side of the screen. To write a brief overview of the pedestrian bridge, unique component of the project, the applicant is seeking to build a pedestrian walking bridge to connect from the proposed project at 1400 Bristol Street to a previously entitled and completely separate project at 1300 Bristol. It would be attached above the podium level and allow for access between the two buildings. The pedestrian bridge would be at least 17 feet above the right-of-way to provide for adequate clearance for any kind of emergency vehicles and other types of vehicles. It will be required to meet all Caltrans standards for bridges over right-of-ways. Additionally, the applicant will be required to enter into a lease agreement or another form of agreement with the city in order to provide compensation for the use of air rights. This is a view of the same exhibit but from a little bit further away to start to give you an idea of what the project looks like. However, I'm not going to go into the architectural detail as the applicant does have their architect present and will provide a more detailed presentation, but it does give you an idea of what the overall look will look like including substantial landscaping as well as sidewalks to improve the pedestrian experience in the area. Because the applicant is requesting a density bonus, as I mentioned, they're required to have an affordable housing implementation plan. As part of their density bonus application, they're entitled to three incentives or concessions and in this case, they are only requesting one at this time but reserve the right to request additional ones in the future. At this time, they're requesting to modify the affordable unit mix, so instead of providing the code-required number of affordable units in terms of the size of those units, so having the same proportion of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms as the market rate, instead they're going to skew that so that most of the affordable units as shown in this table are going to be studio units and that will allow the project to achieve the affordable units. The applicant is also entitled to unlimited development standard waivers and in this case, the applicant is requesting several. First, the park dedication requirement in the airport area that is required to have the applicant provide for a half-acre park onsite, however in this case, the site is less than two and a half acres and that's not feasible. They're also requesting to waive the maximum residential density which is 30 to 50 dwelling units an acre. In this case, after we apply the density bonus as well as the general plan units, they're at 96 dwelling units an acre. The applicant is seeking to waive the street setback requirements. Instead of providing the large 30-foot required along the streets, they're providing eight feet along Spruce Street and 18 feet along Bristol Street. Additionally, the building height to allow them to achieve the affordable units would be modified from 55 feet to 85 feet. They're also seeking to modify the requirement for private open space, so primarily the studios will not have private open space, things like patios and balconies, however many of the other units will meet that standard or very close to meeting that standard. Additionally, they'll be waiving the requirement for common open space. They'll be providing 13,800 square feet of open space for the common amenities where roughly 17,000 is required. The applicant is also required to enter into a development agreement with the city. That agreement is currently under negotiation, however I can provide some basic details at this time, including the fact that it will include a tenure term and it will include a public safety fee as well as some type of park fee as well. I can also state at this time that it will likely be similar to recent projects that have been entitled in the airport area, specifically Newport Airport Village. And this slide shows a general example of what was required as part of the Newport Airport Village project, however it will be adjusted by CPI. For CEQA purposes, an addendum has been prepared and the environmental consultant is here if there are any questions pertaining to this item. Essentially as described in this slide, the project would not trigger any of the thresholds that would require them to do additional analysis such as an EIR or a mitigated negative declaration. They're also required to complete a traffic study which has been prepared and approved by Public Works. The project results in a net increase of about 624 daily trips, however there'll be no impacts to local intersections and there's no mitigation required for those trips. I would like to make some revisions to the conditions of approval in the resolution. There are several typographical errors and a couple of conditions that were repeated, so I will be updating the final resolution to correct those errors. Additionally, there's a few conditions that need to be revised as well. For example, number 68, there is an off-site sewer improvement that needs to be constructed prior to the certificate of occupancy for this project. And I've included an extra statement here to clarify that the city may potentially cover the cost of that improvement, so just providing a little bit more detail here depending on what will happen in the future. For number 76, providing additional clarification on the timing of that Orange County Health Department approval. The approval from OC Health only relates to the pool, so it makes more sense to complete that prior to the certificate of occupancy. Additionally, I've provided some red lines on this page pertaining to condition number 89 and this is the condition from real property that pertains to the bridge. So I've added additional language here, for example, the applicant shall enter into a lease agreement or other form of agreement as determined by the city. That agreement may take a different form for the use of air rights over the Spruce Street right-of-way. I've also added that the agreement shall require that the bridge be owned, operated and maintained by the property owner of 1400 Bristol Street and this is intended to make sure that if the two properties are in the future owned by different entities, that one is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of this bridge. Lastly, there were a couple words missing from condition number 91 that I wanted to add pertaining to fire protection. As commented by Mr. Roser. As commented by Mr. Moser, we did receive some public comments regarding the project. We need to make an edit in Exhibit C of the resolution, and this is the anomaly table that tells us the maximum square footage, or types of uses that can be built on the subject property in this particular anomaly. And so originally, the language stated that there were two, it sounded as if there were two office buildings that were each roughly 39,000 square feet, when in reality, both office buildings total 39,000 square feet, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear in the record. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution, recommending approval of the project to the City Council. In terms of next steps, the project will be heard by the Airport Land Use Commission for a recommendation, and then we will continue on to the City Council for public hearings. And with that, that concludes my presentation. The applicant is also present with the presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions of staff before we go to public comment? Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Ms. Westmoreland, do you know, as far as HCD is concerned, if they're going to accept all of these units as part of our Reno requirements? Because I know with the density bonus, it gets a little tricky. Sometimes it's, you know, this number, and sometimes it's the whole thing. Do we have any indication as to whether we're going to accept them all?
What I can say is that the State Department of Housing and Community Development has accepted our housing element with approximately rezones for 8,100 units, and the point I wanted to make on that is, is that this site is a housing opportunity site that was identified in the housing element, and that was certified by the state, as I mentioned. So that also helps support the recommendation to change the general plan land use designation from office to the mixed-use designation, and then treat it like all the other mixed-use properties in the airport area. But yes, HCD has accepted the units, and they're in our certified housing element.
Pretty good. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Harris?
That sewer line a couple blocks away, do we have any magnitude on the cost of that?
Currently, we believe the cost will be roughly $750,000.
So it's not too crazy. Okay. It just seems like a big burden a couple blocks away for the first guy in, if it was, you know, millions of dollars, I understand, or that, do we have a calculation on that, or that's TBD? We're kind of figuring out?
In terms of the potential cost?
Of the payback, if the city does it first, and then would it be, you know, as people tie in, they pay? That's typically what we do, or something like that?
It could come in a variety of forms, so it's possible that the applicant will be required to fund and construct the entire improvement. If additional projects are built, and we are anticipating some additional projects at this time, including one at 1401 Quail, which would contribute to the excess at the sewer line, then they would have to pay into this as well. However, it's possible that the city will decide to pay for the entire cost.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lowry from afar, any questions of staff?
Nope. I'm good at this point. Thanks.
Okay, great. Commissioner Vice Chair Rosine?
Just a quick follow-up on that. How many sites were identified that would contribute to the, was it just the one other? Or was it?
There have been, there have been other projects that have been approved that contribute to the excess of the sewer line. However, the specific projects that we were evaluating as part of this technical report included the past projects that have already been built, as well as this project and 1401 Quail, which is directly adjacent to the site. So it's primarily those two, but it's a cumulative impact over time.
I was just thinking about how that agreement could be worked out, so it makes sense that you're still trying to figure it out as well.
So Vice Chair Rosine, let me go ahead and answer it. So the city is negotiating development agreement fees with three different property owners. Most likely, we're just going to utilize the development agreement fees to replace that sewer line. The sewer line with three different projects, the 1300 Bristol, the 1400 Bristol, and the 1401 Quail, which you haven't heard yet, will max out that sewer line. The sewer line still is operational, but it just, there's no more buffer after all those projects are built, so the city is going to have to eventually replace that sewer line.
Any other questions of staff? No. Okay, I'll move on to ex parte communications. I'll start down with Vice Chair Rosine.
None.
I had a brief conversation with the applicant's representative.
None since the PAC has been out, but a couple weeks ago with the representative of the applicant.
I had a brief conversation with the applicant's representative.
I spoke with the representative of the applicant as well.
And Commissioner Lowry?
Spoke briefly with the applicant's representative.
Great, thank you. I believe the applicant is here. Yes, you are. Hello, and you have a presentation, so feel free. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and let you proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, and members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for gathering tonight to consider our proposed development. My name is Greg Nakahira. I've been a member of TPG for almost three decades. So before we get started, we'd like to thank city staff. Liz Westmoreland, it's our first time working with you. You've done an extraordinary job guiding our team and keeping everyone on track, so thank you very much. And it's our understanding that tonight is Jim Campbell's last Planning Commission meeting, and from all of us at Passern Group, we want to thank you for your service to the city and the community. We're going to miss you and congratulate you on your next chapter. And we want to hear about your cross-country trip with your four-year-old granddaughter when you get back, and, you know, please remember, you're always welcome at the Passern And of course, thank you to Simone and Yolanda, who have been invaluable in helping us manage this challenging process. We're very fortunate to work with the best and the brightest in the industry, which I believe reflects in the final submittal we have before you. Members of our consultant team are present tonight to answer any questions that might The Passern Group is a family office for Ken Passern, who resides in Newport Beach with his family, and established the company's headquarters in this great city. Mr. Passern is here tonight. TPG is unique in today's real estate community that relies on institutional capital to develop larger properties. We use all of our own capital, invest in the developments, and do not sell the completed project, or flip the land once it's entitled. We couple this investment philosophy with becoming long-term community members in the cities we invest in, and through the Passern Family Foundation, we give back to nonprofit groups in the city. I'd like to next introduce Satish Lyon, who's my colleague at the Passern Group, and he was really our team leader in working with city staff.
Good evening, Chair Elmore, and members of the commission. My name is Satish Lyon, and I'm with the Passern Group. So One Uptown, which you see up here, was our first development in Newport Beach, and the first development in our, our first development in the Uptown Newport Master Plan, and a project we're really proud of. If you walk the property with Mr. Passern, he'll point out, he'll point out all the things that we did right, but he'll also point out the things that needed improvement. He'll often say, "Our properties are a laboratory, and we learn from our residents."
There you go.
There goes.
Okay. So we've taken the lessons learned from One Uptown and our resident feedback, and we use this information in the projects that we have in planning. Our future projects are moving towards the next level of quality and interior specifications of luxury condos. We are moving this direction in response to what we are learning from our residents, which is they want a higher level of finish, and they want better service. Additionally, we've always believed that projects that contain affordability, if seamlessly integrated into the project, can be successful, and we have proven this. We believe mixed-income projects are the best method to start to meet the city's affordable housing mandate. Next, I'd like to bring up Corey Bidding from TCA Architects to discuss some of the project's design highlights.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Corey Bidding, Associate Principal and Studio Director at TCA Architects. I am the lead architect on this project, and I'm excited to present 1400 Bristol as part of the Passern team, who continue to explore and innovate in the luxury apartment industry. We're working with the Passern Group on multiple projects and continue to develop our designs. This project evolves from the lessons learned at One Uptown Newport, which is fully occupied and has been operating for years. We've improved upon several design elements, from the unit plans to where those units are placed in the building, from how we approach our amenity spaces. We've implemented all of these at 1400 Bristol. 1400 Bristol has been designed to operate independently, but due to the adjacency to the approved 1300 Bristol project, we have a unique opportunity to provide a complimentary building design and amenity package. From here, I'll dive into the building and explain how we're achieving the project goals. Quickly orient everybody, we're looking at ground-level plan. We have Bristol Street to the south, or to the bottom of the page, Spruce Avenue to the right, and north is to the top-left of the page. The main drive for residents and guests is off of Spruce Avenue, and a secondary driveway for resident use only is off of Bristol Street. Most of the ground level is parking, but you'll see that we place the business center at the intersection of Bristol and Spruce. This is done to anchor the building and to encourage pedestrian activity. To further encourage pedestrian activity, the project provides a complete landscape design palette with a layered landscape palette to create visual interest and accent the architecture along street franchises, connecting into a dog park and dog spa on-site for resident Here at the second level of the building, you'll see the resident units of studios, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units around a central courtyard. We've designed a pedestrian bridge that will connect to the approved 1300 Bristol project. The bridge spans Spruce Street and leads residents directly into the courtyard amenities of both projects. Because of the project adjacencies, we're able to provide complimentary, larger, and higher-quality amenities to both projects. 1400 Bristol will include an expansive clubroom with a sports and entertainment lounge, a bar, and a private dining room. What's special about this clubroom is the attached California Room, that provides an additional 1,800 square feet of space for games and seating to create a true indoor-outdoor experience and take advantage of our Southern California weather. Every amenity in the courtyard has been designed to encourage an active social atmosphere. A resort-style pool and spa is a central feature, surrounded by lounge chairs and cabanas. To the left of the spa, you'll see a further seating area around fire pits, and a see-through fire pit at the head of the pool connects the pool deck to the outdoor dining area on the right side of the courtyard. Lastly, the media center with creative workspaces is placed at the bottom-right corner to have a visual connection to the business center below. At the fifth level of the building, we have a really cool rooftop, deck, and lounge amenity. You can see in the render on the right, we have designed a unique indoor-outdoor experience for residents to overlook the city. Passern plans to activate this space regularly for residents to enjoy drinks and sunset views. I want to take you on a quick tour around the project. In the render, you're looking at the building from Bristol Street and Spruce Avenue. You can see the business center on the ground floor and the media center just above that. We've designed the corners with enhanced materials, specifically a rich stone tile that starts at the ground level and continues up to the top floor. The units here also have a large wraparound balconies to anchor the building to the site and take advantage of the views. Along with the pedestrian bridge, these enhanced corners will establish a gateway into the project. The other materials being implemented here are stucco, cement, and s siding, and metal Continuing into the site, we've passed under the pedestrian bridge and are looking at the main vehicular entry. Here, we've used the enhanced materials to frame the entry and establish a rival into the building. We've moved around the building and now back on Bristol Street, you'll see that first corner to the right, and you see the roof deck to the left. This corner is designed to mirror the architecture at the intersection. On these units as well, we have added large wraparound balconies to take advantage of the westernly views, and the enhanced material here grounds the building and bookends the architecture. Between the two corners, the siding material has been used to provide articulation and to break up the vertical scale of the building. We believe this project will be a positive addition to Bristol Street. Thank you for the opportunity to present our design. I'll be available for questions later. Now pass it on to Greg Nakahira.
Community support. So there are two neighborhood retail centers that sit directly east of 1400 Bristol. A total of approximately 80,000 square feet.
Will you get a little closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. And they have numerous restaurants, a hair, beauty salon, golf fitting store, and an urgent care center, and, and I think you've received many letters from these folks in your packet. And so these folks, their only question to us is, "When can we expect your future residents to walk and not drive and shop in our stores?" So they, they see the value of our project. Okay, in closing, it's not difficult to see that the airport market is the one area in Newport Beach that will go through a dramatic change in the next 10 years. In addition to residential, we believe retail and entertainment development will occur organically, as they recognize the spending power of the future residents that will live, work, and shop in this area. We also believe it'll help employers recruit. Creating parks and walkable trails will need to be more directed through a public and private partnership, and the Passern Group is focused on working with the city to help provide leadership in this area. Mr. Passern feels a deep responsibility to create the right mixed-use village environment in the airport area. We truly want to look back in 10 years and feel like we made a positive difference in the city. So thank you very much. And Chair Elmore, we received the conditions of approval late last week, and so...
Are you in agreement?
Well, I'm confident we will be in agreement in short order.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm sorry, are we in agreement on the conditions, just for clarification purposes? I guess we have some modifications on our end that we have to clear up, so Yolanda...
To the applicant, is there any issues with what Liz shared on the screen?
No.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Before we sit down, Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? All we have, them in front of us. Yeah, Commissioner Seline?
And this is just a kind of a design curiosity. The pedestrian bridge, I think, is cool-looking. Are there, obviously 1300 and 1400 are going to be able to go back and forth. Are there different amenities offered at each building so that there's a reason for them to travel back and forth? Or are they the same thing?
There will be different amenities, complimentary. 1300 Bristol will be more wellness and relaxation-focused, and 1400 Bristol, as we stated, is more active and socially-focused.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Langford? Commissioner Lowry from afar, any questions for the applicant?
I went similar to David's, but it's answered. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Vice Chair Rosine?
Just a real quick question on...
Vice Chair, will you get a little closer to the mic as well?
Quick question regarding the loading and unloading zone. I actually was looking for it and wasn't looking for it there, and so that's why I couldn't find it. So my question is, is during your lease-up, how are you going to manage that? And then, in addition to that, I was surprised to not see an elevator system that would support, it looks like I found three elevators, that support, you know, moving in the larger facility, you know? These don't, and maybe, maybe I'm just incorrectly looking at this, but how big are the elevators? Are there, there's not a service elevator? Am I missing it? And it's quite possible that I am, so I was just looking for that.
Right, so two-part question, it sounds like?
So as far as the elevator, we do have an elevator dedicated to move-ins within, you know, at that first entry into the building from the loading zone there. It's labeled Elevator 2. That will be a full-sized elevator is typically provided for these uses.
The loading area isn't necessarily for lease-up and moving, it's just, that's a loading and unloading for a different, for a different use?
Yeah, there will be move-ins there as well.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, great. Commissioner Harris, any questions? Secretary?
Thank you. You guys, you...
You guys, your team mentioned low-income housing, and, you know, check some box for us and state it's great. And how does it flow within the project? Do you guys divide them out and spread those units around? How are those placed?
Yes, the affordable units are spread throughout the project.
Great. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. This time, I'll go ahead and open up to the audience for public comment. Does anybody from the audience wish to make a public comment?
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, to Commissioner Langford's question about how this impacts our RENA requirements, I believe the response is correct that the bonus units will count towards that, but the bonus units, as I understand it, will all be market-rate units, and so they will count towards a quota that we don't really have any problem meeting. Our problem is meeting the quota for middle, low, and very-low income units. This is thankfully making contribution of 23 towards the very-low quota, but out of a 229-unit development, that is just 10% of it. So, if we were going to meet our 2,048-unit low and very-low requirement, out of projects similar to this, we would have to build 10 times as much, we would have to build 20,000 market-rate units in the city. And that's even assuming that somebody's going to come along and build the low, which don't give us much advantage, the very-low. And the 20,000 units would mean we would need, in the next six years of the cycle runs, we would need about 90 projects like this, or about one per month, to meet our low and very-low requirement if they were providing those. Second comment I had is, apparently the applicant has done something, we heard, to allow unlimited waivers of development standards. I'm not quite sure I understand what that is. Is it really totally unlimited that they can do anything they want? Or is it unlimited that the waiver has to be something necessary to accomplish this particular project? And then, did we analyze where we really needed to do those to accomplish this project? I'm not sure about that. As to the SEQA analysis, I understand SEQA is mostly about the impacts of the project on the environment, rather than the environment on the project. But the courtyard in the center, I would think six stories and a little space in between, that's not going to get a lot of sunlight most of the time. I don't know if that was analyzed. I think one end is going to be permanently shaded. The noise, I know we've been concerned about airport noise. I was surprised that there's a lot of noise from Bristol Street. The balconies facing that, from Bristol Street alone, are going to get 65 decibels of traffic noise, and as a member of the G-PAC Noise Committee, I was surprised to learn that we don't consider the noise coming from the freeway, which is adjacent to that, so I would suspect the noise is even higher. And then, last night, we had a G-PAC meeting and we received a report about what's called Resiliency of the City. I was surprised to hear that all new buildings in Newport Beach are now going to produce as much energy as they consume, and so I looked a little bit into the SEQA report, and it said that this building will produce, will consume 1.6 million kilowatt-hours a year of electricity, 2.5 million BTUs per year of gas, and it said nothing about that it was going to compensate for that in any way. So, I think the G-PAC may have been misunderstanding or misinformed that all our buildings are energy-neutral now. I'm not quite sure what's happening in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. Seeing no other speakers, does the applicant, any final comments? Or are you guys good to move on? Good to move? Great. Staff, any final comments before I close the public hearing?
I would be happy to address some of the comments that Mr. Mosher provided. Excuse me. First pertaining to the noise comment relevant to the local roadway noise, we do have a condition of approval included that will require the applicant to complete a noise analysis, and as part of that, they'll have to demonstrate how they are going to attenuate the noise to meet our city standards. So, that will be taken care of through that separate process. In terms of energy, SEQA currently does require an energy analysis, however, the analysis that was provided as part of the SEQA document was only for information because it was not a requirement at the time the actual EIR was prepared. So, that was for information purposes only. Additionally, the project will be subject to Calgrain standards that are very stringent when it comes to efficiency of buildings. In terms of the comment regarding unlimited development standard waivers, I want to clarify that density bonus law, as well as our city municipal code regarding density bonus, does provide for the ability for the applicant to request as many development standard waivers as they need in order to make the project physically fit. And so, that's what the development standard waivers relate to. That concludes my comments.
Great. I was just going to add to that piece that there are a couple cases, one that came out of San Diego recently and another prior in Berkeley, that actually determined these development standard waivers very generously. And so, with that, we have followed that precedent and applied those here.
Understood. Got it. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this Commission for comment, discussion, and action. Any Commissioners want to start? I'll start with Commissioner Lowry from afar. Any...
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, going through the staff report, you know, the findings seem all right on, and some of the specifics that Yolanda just spoke to, a couple of the questions I had, but they were pretty much answered. And, I mean, I just think a beautiful building, it's going to be a real nice addition there on Bristol Street. I think, as Greg alluded to, I mean, Bristol's going to change, and that whole area is going to change over the next 10 years, and I think this will be a nice addition and chip away at our RENA numbers as we start developing these new residences. So, those are my comments.
Great. Thank you. Any other Commissioners, Vice Chair, I'll start down. Anything with you? Comments?
Yeah, I think this is a great addition to the airport area. It's going to be a beautiful project. Everything that the PRCERN group has built is always a beautiful building, and so I can make the findings in... I'll be supporting this particular project.
Great. Commissioners, Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, Chair Elmore, thanks. I just applaud the PRCERN group and everyone associated with the project. We like to see local investment here in Newport Beach. There's been a lot of it lately, so it's really, it's a really great thing to see. So, I'm just appreciative as a resident, but also as a planning Commissioner, to see such a big project that was well-thought-out, and staff for all their attention to it.
Right. Any other Commissioners? Any other comments? Commissioner, Secretary Harris?
Echo these guys, I'm really excited about the area being transformed. I think it's been time. I think the first project, this whole up-down airport area is ready for it, and, you know, obviously, the circumstantial where it checks off the boxes for the city, that helps, but having a good operator in there taking charge, we appreciate it, and I'd make a motion to approve.
Great.
Yeah, I, as the Chair, I think the airport area is going to be a dramatically different place in the future, and the quality of which this construction and this project brings in terms of the finishes, the fixtures, and the thought is trailblazing, and I hope it sets a precedent for the other projects, that they maintain this level of quality and this attention to detail. And so, I applaud the applicant for bringing forward a thoughtful presentation and a thoughtful project.
Do we have a second, anybody? Commissioner Celine?
Since I didn't get to say how wonderful this project's going to be, I'll second it.
We have a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote.
Please respond when I call your names, starting with Commissioner Langford.
Aye.
Chair Elmore?
Aye.
Secretary Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Celine?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rosine?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowry?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Congratulations to the applicant, and I'm going to continue the meeting moving on, but if you guys want to stick around for a couple more minutes, I think it'd be great. Item number seven, staff and Commissioner, oh, excuse me, number five, motion for reconsiderations. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move on to item number six, which is the report by the Community Development Director. A few words about Jim Campbell. I would like to just reiterate, and I think my colleagues would as well, and maybe some background. This is Jim, as we guys, as you know, this is going to be Jim's last meeting, and I believe tomorrow is his last day. He's decided that after almost 24 years of service, that he is now going to sunset and move on to the next journey of his life. A few words about Jim. He started his career in Newport Beach in 2000. As a senior planner, he worked his way up and was promoted to principal planner in 2008. Lot of hard work, lot of dedication, lot of long nights. Jim was promoted to deputy director in 2017, overseeing the planning division. When he did that, at that same time, he led a team of 13 planners working on entitlement projects for the city. This is a challenging city, and I say challenging in terms of, that's actually a benefit to the city because of the involvement is so great, the people in this community are so involved and so educated, that there's a lot of checks and balances for the staff that they have to go through, and it makes their job very challenging, but it also means that they're the highest pedigree around. Jim's career with the city, he's worked on a bunch of big, some major projects, the city general plan update, the Lido House Hotel, Hoag Hospitals expansion. Most recently, and not to be forgotten, he obtained the city's sixth-cycle housing element certification by HCD. Very long and unprecedented and challenging update process. Jim, you've had a long career with the city of Newport Beach. From all of us on the Planning Commission, I want to say thank you for everything you've done, and for all the people from the city, we want to thank you for everything you've done, and the best to you and your family. Quick note, just, you know, I've joined the Planning Commission about five years ago, and the first meeting, there was something about you, Jim, that stuck out to me, and it wasn't just your IQ on the subject matter at hand, but it's also the way your cadence and your delivery at every meeting, when communicating with the public, when communicating topics that are very, can be very challenging and confusing for a lot of people to understand. These meetings can be very emotional, they can be very challenging for people to wrap their arms around them, and the way that you have carried yourself and the way that you have served and represented the city is unbelievably remarkable. And as a Commissioner, I have a lot of confidence in everything that you do and bring forward in front of us because of how well you've done it. So, I want to say thank you personally, as the Chair, and we wish you, again, all the very best. And my understanding is tomorrow's your last day, so maybe you can tell us a little bit about what you wanted, what retirement's going to have for you.
Chair Elmore, Commissioners, I very much appreciate those words. You know, I came to the city in the year 2000, worked my way up and been doing this job in this position as deputy with Simone for the last seven years, I guess. You know, many planning commission meetings. I was talking to Brad just a moment ago, and I was estimating about 400 planning commission meetings over that time, and then, I don't know, a number of council meetings and B-VAC meetings and, you know, town hall meetings, it's kind of crazy. So, I'll look forward to having my Thursday nights back, and that'll be very nice. But, you know, I'm a miss working with the team. I've worked with many, many planners. I've worked with many planning commissions and many planning Commissioners, and I've always found that the city has brought forward, and I want to commend you folks for your volunteering here, because you get a very minor stipend to be here, and you spend a lot of time with us here. You review our long reports and listen to us make these presentations, and it's been my distinct pleasure to work with all those planning commissioners, especially the Commissioners here today, and I do appreciate that, and I thank you for your service as well. You know, moving forward, you know, I'm going to be retired. I'm going to enjoy my... My wife is here, my granddaughter is here, my son and his wife is here. We have a very good friend, Julie, who is here as well, and so I'm going to be spending time with the family, helping my daughter move down here and going to Hawaii and traveling the country. You know, eventually, my wife will get tired of me sitting around the house and probably kick me out, and I might come back as a consultant. You never know where I might be, or maybe not. But again, I'm just going to be, you know, just winding down and focusing, but I'm going to be definitely keeping active, doing some volunteering, and you never know, I might be coming back as a consultant. But, you know, it's been my distinct pleasure to work for the city of Newport Beach for the last 24 years, or almost 24 years. You know, this is a wonderful community. You know, I tell my team is that it just doesn't suck to work here. You know, this is a beautiful town. We don't have an economic development department, and you should also recognize how remarkable that really is. We really don't need investors to come here. They come here, they want to be here. You've got some of them here today who want to make this community better, and it's been my pleasure to kind of help guide them, go through the regulations. It's very, very complicated. You know, I can say it's been, you know, that Pine Knot Project, it took us a good year to figure out how to get that thing into a shape where we can entitle it, because it was so complicated with the non-conformities. And just working with the applicants, working with the property owners, communicating it to the public, you know, it's been a challenging job, but I really enjoyed it, and, you know, I love this community. I'll be coming back and vacationing here and visiting often. I just live on the other side of the airport, on the other side of the runway there in the city of Tustin, so I do intend to stay in California, in the Orange County area, so you never know where I might be. With that, I'll conclude, but I want to say thank you. Thank you, Simone, for the opportunity. Thank all the staff who's here, and I'll wrap it up. My last part on the report is you do have a meeting...
How about a development, your director's report, please?
Couple more meetings here. I do want to point out that the December 14th meeting has been canceled. That project couldn't meet that agenda. I do appreciate everyone kind of stepping forward and taking on a special meeting in December. I know that's hard, but we're going to cancel it, so you have that night free. But we're going to bring that project back on the 21st. You've got four projects on the 21st, so not overly challenging projects, but there is a project, housing project directly adjacent to the one you just saw coming back. It's a little smaller in scale, but quite a nice project. So, I won't be at that meeting on the 21st. As I said, tomorrow is my last day. Mr. Jaime Mario, you've met him, you've seen him come and present here to you folks. He'll be taking over as the acting deputy director, and he'll be leading the planning team going forward in my absence. And I guess with that, that concludes my report, and I'll just say thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. A quick round of applause. I do have to open it up for anybody from the audience that would wish to talk on these items. Mr. Mosher, that would give you an opportunity, if you have any words for Jim.
I think you summed it up well. Our relationship is a little bit different, but I appreciate his professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, Commissioners, any requests for... Oh, excuse me. Yeah, yes, please. Yeah, we had on the Community Development Directors' items, please feel free. State your name.
Hi, my name is Jack Campbell. I am James Campbell's son, and I just wanted to say how proud of him I am, and I know that he spent a lot of time here throughout his career, and I'm just really proud of him for all the work that he does.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming up. Any other? Okay. Seeing no excused absences either, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at, what are we, at 6:52 PM? All right.